Kelly?
We're getting water, there wasn't any back there, but you know she's had to do a little socialize.
All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to this lovely Friday and strategic planning process. Commissioners, I know most of us know this, but I'll let the audience know Commissioner Part is not available to join us today, but I'm sure he'll be watching as soon as he gets a chance. So Commissioners, I'm just gonna call the meeting to order and I'm gonna turn it to our City Manager.
Thank you Mayor and Commissioners for making time today. I know we had our scheduled session previously, unfortunately, we had to reschedule. But I want to be, before we start, be mindful, I know Commissioner Reparts is not here, I know we have some hard stops today. And I think 10:30, everybody's here till 10:30? Okay. So we will, we will try to get through the balance of the sections as quickly as possible. And then afterwards, we will have a brief conversation about prioritization. So with that, without further ado, I want to, first of all, let me thank all the city staff that continues to be part of this collaborative planning process. You can see the staff that's here today. And I want to thank Allison Sutter, our Sustainability and now Performance Management Officer for the city, for leading us through this effort. So, thank you. So with that, I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you, City Manager, and good morning Mayor and Commissioners.
Morning.
Happy to be here this Friday morning. And as City Manager mentioned, continuation from the session that we had on February 26th, where we spent some time working through our draft preliminary strategic plan. So today, I'm very quickly just going to flip through the content and your packets that you have is 99% the same, just a few little formatting items that have changed and reflection of today's date to indicate that the date was changed from our previously scheduled session. So with that, I'm just gonna walk through, as I said, I'm kind of flipping through, you can see on your screen, I'm not gonna spend time for purposes of today, but we had talked about the framework and where we had been in January leading up to this session. Our focus today, really unveiling the content specifically around the strategies and the metrics within the plan. So we're gonna continue that conversation today with some of the team members that are here with me today are gonna come up and provide an overview of those sections. And so just a reminder on our values again, because I do think that this is very important, always start with our values. I won't read all of them, but just an identification of them. Accountability, collaboration, customer service, equity, innovation, sustainability. And I did go ahead on this slide, make the update that you had as a part of your discussion around the vision statement. So it was a couple of revisions, I know Commissioner Kelly helped with that. So it currently states Grand Rapids will be nationally recognized as equitable, welcoming, innovative, and collaborative with a robust economy, safe and healthy community, and the opportunity for a high quality of life for all. And then there were no changes to the mission statement. It states to elevate quality of life through excellent city services. So with that, just a reminder, we have, after our last session, there were seven identified strategic priorities. At our last session, we went through the content on governmental excellence, economic prosperity and affordability, safe community, and mobility. So today, we're gonna jump into now talking about health and environment. Then we'll have the conversation on engaged and connected community. We'll wrap up with a conversation on equity, and then I'll turn it back over to the City Manager at that time. So this is just a list of all of our strategic priorities and the outcome statements. And then the only thing that I, as a reminder, we shared this at our last session with respect to the content, asked the team members that are gonna be up here today to really focus on significant changes from the last time that you saw the plan, as well as if you see the term "new" in brackets on the metrics, that is a metric that has not been publicly reported before. And so just wanting to call your attention to some of those suggested metrics that haven't been publicly reported. Okay, so now I'm gonna flip, because actually the first one is health and environment. And that is the section that I led with a very robust outcome team, and those members are here with me today. So in the actual draft plan that you have, it's on page 14, is where the health and environment section starts. And so I should just ask if you have any questions before I jump into highlighting some of the changes and items within the health and environment section. Okay. So as a reminder, the outcome statement, the desired outcome that was drafted is that the health of all people and the environment are advocated for, protected, and enhanced. There are five objectives in the health and environment section covering climate and energy, also covering parks and green spaces, water quality, our waste practices, as well as health disparities, as kind of the overarching review. So a couple of items to call your attention to under Objective 1, that is talking about reducing greenhouse gas emissions and working on climate resiliency. The first strategy really identifies that some work needs to be done to create carbon reduction goals that are more broad than just our electricity, our renewable energy goal, and how we'll be working to incorporate those goals into our different planning efforts, including the master plan process. And then really, the seventh one that I wanted to call your attention to there is that it says assess the feasibility and cost of offsetting 100% of city electricity with renewable sources by fiscal year 2025. And that's something that we've started to work on and will continue to work on to have a solid plan for moving forward around our renewable energy goals. The second objective, which is specific to ensuring equitable access to and use of green spaces and increasing recreational activities. The first strategy is not new, but I want to highlight it because it's one that we, that the team really worked to embed equity. And that's around expanding parks and active open spaces to reduce disparities in park-deficient neighborhoods. So really calling attention to that, as well as working to close gaps in the regional trail system and some other strategies specific that our Parks and Recreation Department has really been working on. And you can see under the metrics, which if you turn to page 15 at the top, there are some metrics here that have been identified to help track the progress on that. And one that I'll call it is the fourth one, which is the percentage of households within a 10-minute walk of a park or an active green space. And so really tracking that, and I know the department's done a great job of identifying those park deficit neighbors and wanting to get down to that level to be able to disaggregate the data, which is a reminder from our last session. Under governmental excellence, which is our first strategic priority, we have that commitment to disaggregate all data by race, ethnicity, gender, and geography. So that's something to the extent possible in all of the different metrics that are discussed, that we will continue to do that as we embed equity throughout all of the tracking of the data and the metrics. So Objective 3 changed slightly. Previously, it was water and air combined together, and we decided to move air to the objective on health disparities. So this Objective 3 now is very focused solely on water and is protect and preserve our water resources. And there are a number of new strategies that were added to this section with that focus. So Number 2 is really speaking to PFOS and the work that's been happening around PFOS in terms of implementing a reduction plan and monitoring plans for that emerging contaminant. Wanted to add in and reflect all the work that we've been doing around lead service line replacements, knowing that that's a long-term commitment that we have, so that's reflected in Strategy 3. And then Strategies 6 and 7 are new. The sixth one talks about identifying water conservation strategies in our own city operations, as well as what can we be doing to help customers with water efficiency as well. And then the last one is really trying to understand and dig into our water and sewer shut-off and why that's occurring, and what we can be doing to be more proactive to help minimize and eliminate that from happening.
Yeah, wondering if that is the place, or just wondering about the absence of, you know, the efforts to restore the rapids and in the process to protect the resources, is that, was that at all discussed?
So that is, and that is one of those great examples where it fits in a lot of different areas. So right now, where we have it is actually under economic prosperity and affordability, talking about the River Restoration Project holistically, with a primary driver being job creation, but also the recognition, to your point exactly, that it's very much about the health and the environmental sustainability of the river as well, and that being a key component.
Thank you.
For the metrics below there, I just wanted to call out the second metric, we've clarified a little on your current copy, it talks about the area of green infrastructure. So the appropriate metric that we'll be using there are gallons of stormwater that have been infiltrated, and that's something that I know that our ESD department has been working to build so that we can track that and start to identify the amount of water that's successfully being infiltrated via our green infrastructure projects. And the third metric, which talks about a pollutant measure for the Grand River, we do have a water quality index measure that we use for the river, and so that will be the metric that we'll use to report out for purposes of monitoring the quality within the Grand River. So if you turn the page now to 16, I'll just note, we call out, of course, a couple new metrics there around PFOS. And 7 and 8, again, reflecting those new strategies around the water shut-offs and use of our water and sewer bill assistance fund. The fourth objective is specific to our waste practices, so minimize waste generation and promote waste diversion practices. Not a lot has changed, changed from here, from what we discussed and shared with you at the January 22nd workshop, although I will note that the first strategy is a new one in talking about evaluating some opportunities around our refuse collection system and looking at trash recycling and composting services being bundled together and some opportunities that we may have with that service. So that's really the new strategy that was identified there. And under the metrics, I just wanted to highlight the third one, which would be a new one, and that's around our, what you have approved for the operations at Domtar with respect to our new compost that will be taking place onsite and tracking that, so that we can provide some metrics of performance around that. The last objective under health and environment is the one that speaks directly to health disparities and really here more the focus being on collaborating with and supporting partners that are really doing work in this area to reduce health disparities. So again, the first strategy hasn't changed, but that's really one where we worked very intentional to integrate equity in talking about increasing the resources around the lead-based paint hazards in homes and continuing that work. And then Strategies 2 and 4 are new, and those more call out some collaboration opportunities with Invest Health and other partners to continue conversations around looking at mental health, addiction, and health disparities, being focused in our neighborhoods of focus, and also being mindful about health and all policies. So those are a couple of new items. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes, thank you. I'm glad to see that here, because as I was listening to this and reading it, one of the things I noticed is that so much of this is focused on our physical well-being. But of course, mental and physical well-being go together, and we've had a lot of work that's being done by Chief Lehman, certainly Captain Riefenberg and Officer Witkowski, for example, in that arena. And you, and you do talk about these census tracts, but I think that we need to expand that to our entire city concerned for our, the mental health and well-being of all of our residents. I think back to a seminar I attended several years ago at the Urban League, where there was a talk about different groups and regardless of their educational level, income level, who suffer more than others. I know a lot of that's related to the Health Department, but I think that for us to also consider different impacts, whether it's trauma, whether it's the work environment for our employees, or whatever we can consider for our own residents, that we really ought to be thinking about that as well. We've, mental health services have kind of gone by the wayside over the years, and this is why we're now talking with the county, and the county is looking at what Oakland County is doing. So just something to consider, and I think we don't want to overlook.
If I could, Mayor, yeah, along those lines, I was hoping that there could be some thought around creating a metric that speaks to the overall mental health of our residents. And I'd even be very much open to the idea of focusing on the 17 census tracts of focus. And maybe it's just something as simple as really trying to get some idea of who is taking advantage of or who's seeking those services, and are they, you know, are their needs being met? Because I think that's part of the issue that, especially with regards to what I would call culturally competent mental health services, and the need to have organizations that are providing it in communities that are occupied or that are, that are, in which historically marginalized folks reside. And so if there is an opportunity to create that a metric, I would love to take a look at that.
Commissioner, I think that's a good point. In the previous community I was in, the issue around mental health was both inpatient and outpatient facilities and providers, as you said, noticing the shortfall of beds that we had in the community, and that became the metric. I think we would need to nail down, you know, what is the real issue and then begin measuring whether or not we're making progress on it in this community.
I'll ask one more question related to that. I'm to my microphone. Was there any conversation about a metric related to the number of individuals diverted from jail or ER based on mental health or addiction crisis? I know that's something we've talked about for a long time. Other, quite frankly, other cities are doing some, in my opinion, really incredible work related to diversion and providing, working with partners to, not that we would provide the services, but I think there potentially could be a metric related to capturing how many people are diverted.
So Mayor, in response, if I remember, and I'll call on my team members if they're here, but in our safe community section, I think, and I think there is one here, it's just not, I'm not being able to identify it right now, but we talk about in terms of the number of folks that are using emergency services more often than others and looking to better understand the circumstances resulting in that and how we can work to help reduce that. So is that kind of speaking to the issue that you're, you're talking about?
It does. I'm just thinking about a metric, like how do, what are we ultimately trying to do and how do we capture it with data? Yeah, you, and you don't even have to answer it right now. You can always just follow up on it.
Okay, I will confirm.
And get back to me if we have a metric.
So something along the line of something alternative to sentencing and those kind of metrics.
Okay. So I have as my note to make sure that I have it correct, diversions from jail when it's for health-based?
Well, I think specifically for, for mental health or addiction.
Got it. Okay.
Which, which I think ties into the Number 2, looking at mental health addiction to some extent.
Okay, we'll definitely revisit that and give you some follow-up. The last one, just to note, as I briefly mentioned previously, we had air in with the same objective, talking about water, but we decided really our air quality work here being around the new air quality monitoring devices that are being implemented in the work of our ESD department around that. And so here, we've identified that as Strategy 6 under this objective to measure and understand air quality and the health impacts of poor air quality, with the metric Number 2 down below being identified as a new metric around the number of air quality data points that we can be sharing publicly, again, to help drive that collaboration and innovation with partners who will be really working on some air quality assessment and projects.
Um, Allison, can I, um, make one other point?
Yes.
I see number three around, um, decreasing opioid abuse. With the recent news about the Bloomberg grant with the state of Michigan, we should probably follow up, I'm kind of looking at Corin, I don't know if Corin is, has this on her radar or not, but we should follow up with the state to find out what their plan is, and how we potentially could partner with them.
Okay.
And there may be some metrics that come from the state initiative that will trickle down at, to the local level.
Okay, great. And that's, I appreciate, um, that thought, because it reminds me that with this plan, we've really talked about it and described it as a living, breathing document, and some of these areas that are a little bit newer, knowing that we're still learning some things, and there are grant opportunities like this, so fully understanding that we may identify some better metrics, or metrics that we didn't identify before, that we'll continue to evaluate over the course of the four years of this plan, and can amend the plan and add those in as necessary after we've had time to really look at it and better understand.
Great.
That is, right now, the overview that I have for the health and environment section. So, I just want to pause for a minute to see if you have any remaining questions on the health and environment section, um, before I invite my colleague to come up to speak about the engaged and connected community section.
Commissioners? All right.
Okay. Unfortunately, um, our assistant to the city manager, Stacy Stout, is not able to be with us today, and she was one of the team members leading on the engaged and connected community, but I do want to ask our customer service community liaison, Alex Melton, to come up, and she's going to join me to help walk you through the engaged and connected community section, and that does begin on page eleven of the plan that you have, so I'm going to turn it over to Alex.
Great, thank you, Allison. Good morning, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, so, for engaged and connected community, the outcome statement reads, "Residents and stakeholders have awareness of and voice in decisions that affect them, and receive culturally responsive and proactive communication." So, do you have any questions before I get started in any of the changes? All right, great. So, the first objective is to enhance communication with the public. Originally, this was, uh, enhancing the communication with both the public and internally. We moved internal communication to government excellence, um, to go under their purview. So, within the strategies for objective one, two, three, five, and six are all new. So, strategy two relates to developing community, communication protocols that kind of address some of the things that you all were talking about with readability, clarity, um, and just codifying all of that into protocols. The third one is-
We're going to do a card rule at the end.
That's right.
Yes. Definitely. Um, so, strategy three is then about designating and training staff on those protocols, and making sure that those public communications are vetted through the Department of Communications.
Alice, quick question.
Yeah.
So, then, will we create, like, templates, so that as people are sending whatever communication, they would know, kind of, here's where you start as you're drafting a communication, like, these are the elements that need to be required in, in any communication that goes out?
Yeah, so it would be a set of standards and governance in general of what the communication should look like, so with using what we use for the website with the Hemingway editor, and making sure that things are readable at a, you know, grade level that matches the community's, um, readability, and then having some templating for that as well.
Perfect, thanks.
Right, and I want to be sure, these will be guidelines, that should, each department could customize it in general, but it would be guidelines for the organization.
Right.
But it will also, um, have a customer service-driven message versus a punitive, yes?
Right, so it's meeting the residents or the recipient of that communication where they're at, and making sure that everything is user-tested, you know, we put it forward to the community to make sure that it is readable, and it's clear, and it's understandable, and it gets the message across in the best way possible.
Great, and if you need help with something, here are resources to be helpful.
Right.
Yeah, being proactive and making sure that all those resources are linked or attached or included somehow.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
So, question, would it include educational information if there's a, a major change then to?
Yeah.
Why we're doing it?
Yeah, that's a good point, to include the, any changes that are in there.
So, I want to, want to be clear that these, these are, um, this is a start.
Sure.
Where we're going to land. This won't happen next week, because Allison is saying, I mean, lots of, yes, yes, eventually, yes. But tha- that's what we want. That's the strategic outcome that we want to see across our department. Now, we have to, um-
Yeah.
-ramp up our ability to, um, coordinate that throughout the organization, and begins with standards. We just firmed up our, uh, communications director, um, and we're also going to add additional talent, I think, uh, since the announcement with, uh, the new assistant city manager that I'm, have appointed, also comes with a lot of that background and other, other, um, elements in the budget process, too, will also help to ensure that. So, I'll talk a little bit more about that later.
Great. All right, and so, then, the new strategy three is around designating and training staff on those protocols. Um, strategy five, ensuring that we effectively communicate major city services on the website, so keeping that updated. And then, intentionally and clearly communicating policies, programs, and processes to the immigrant community. We called that out specifically, um, because it's very important to us to prioritize that. Within the metrics, one, two, and five are all new, and a lot of these four communications are new, because we have to set the baseline for, um, how these protocols are working, and making sure that they are effective, and, um, relay the message. Um, in objective two, developing a community engagement strategy across all city departments and initiatives, programs and initiatives. Strategies one, three, four, and six are all new. The first strategy is mapping out all of the communication, or sorry, community engagement efforts across all departments, so that we have an understanding of what's going on right now with community engagement, to get a baseline for where we are, so we understand where we're going. Strategy three is creating a community engagement guidebook and training curriculum, so similar to the communication protocols, we would have similar standards and governance guidelines for community engagement. Strategy four, and identifying outreach and engagement gaps, such as with historically marginalized populations, and creating a plan to address those gaps. And then, number six, tracking attendance of community engagement activities to learn patterns and to test targeted approaches, so that we can take what we know and learn and change it up if needed. The metrics within those are also new, and so those would be creating the baseline and, um, understanding what we need to do with staffing, so getting the baseline of the percentage of staff with outreach responsibilities and capabilities trained in community engagement processes, and then the percent increase in census completion among hard-to-count populations. For the third objective, that's creating a process to gauge and enhance community perception. We added the verbiage to also enhance community perception, um, because we don't just want to gauge it, we also want to en, uh, enhance that.
Mm-hmm.
And so, this one relates to the community survey. So, we reworded this so that it's not just related to a single mode of assessment, but it's broad enough that we can do multiple different types of assessment, including the community survey. So, within that, the fourth strategy is new, and that's about communicating more about successful programs and outcomes achieved by the city, so that's related to enhancing community perception. One through four of the metrics are all new, and that relates to the percentage of the respondents within that community survey, and getting the baseline for their sense of belonging, for their, um, satisfaction with surveys, as well as the, um, satisfaction with engagement with the city. Objective four, previously, we had a, a, um, an objective related to engaging stakeholders in an equitable manner, and meeting them where they are. We removed that one, and then we, um, just sprinkled that throughout all of the objectives to make sure that that's, um, the lens that we're doing all this work through. So, for objective four now, it's elevating resident voice in city operations. Strategies two, three, and five are all new. So, two is to increase the residents' awareness of opportunities to leverage their voice, whether that's in various initiatives, city boards and commissions. And then, number three is leveraging partnerships to gather and lift up residents' voice. And number five is creating and testing a tool, um, that compares the community feedback that we get to the approved plan or initiative when it's, um, when it's feasible. So, it might not always be feasible to compare the two, um, but when it is, comparing those and noting the differences between what the community's saying and what we are actually doing.
Oh, that's great.
And then, the metrics within that, one through four are all new.
You have questions?
And those are related to the number of engagement activities and participants in those activities. And that is all of the objectives. Are there any questions or comments?
All right, I'll turn to my colleagues. Commissioner Lanier?
Alex, I know we've been talking a little bit about, um, tracking, like, trash collection, or, um, leaf, um, or street cleaning and things of that nature. I know that we've heard about technology to be able to, um, make the citizens aware of when those services will be coming to their, um, neighborhood. Is that a form of communication? Has that been discussed, and is this where it belongs, or does it belong someplace else? Because I'm just thinking that, that, too, is a form of communication, if, if the tracking of those things, when they do happen, I guess.
Yeah, um, having that proactive communication about city services, I think would fall under this one, and so, we'll add that one in.
Let me also, um, respond, Commissioner. So, part, part of that is, um, ensuring that we have the technology on our mobile assets and the, uh, G B, GPS capability. And so, I think we, we're beginning to pilot that, and once we're able to do that, um, then we will have the ability to integrate that with other applications that residents may be able to enable through the website, or through, um, their mobile applications about where the, where the vehicles are. But, right now, we, we don't have that basic infrastructure ability on, on our vehicles, so it begins with that. And, and part of the reason, I'm glad you mentioned it, the other part of the reason that we, we've taken the approach to, um, have the intentional integration between customer service and innovation, because, um, we, we want, I want, the city to be able to integrate in ways that solve real problems. And so, if you do it from the user experience or customer experience where the issues are, those are the, the real opportunities for having real effective outcomes for, for innovation. So, having said that, this is another opportunity for me to, um, uh, recognize the change that we just made in, um, bridging those, those service areas. Um, but I think we approved in action a few commission meetings ago, that would allow us to begin that deployment of that GPS technology on our vehicles.
And I just think, you know, I, I was asking the question because I want to make sure that as we're doing those innovative things, we're thinking in terms of communication, even though it doesn't feel like it. You know, what are, using the same matrix to make sure that whatever is new that's coming on the scene, that we're, you know, making sure that it's accomplishing the same goal. It's exciting, thanks.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions? Great, thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
So, I did, just because I found it, want to note, under safe community, we have a strategy that says, "Support programs that reduce the need for emergency services by persons experiencing chronic homelessness." So, I've also added that we should add in mental health there as well.
Yeah, and, and maybe addiction as well.
And, yes, thank you, that was the third one, yes.
Good.
Thank you.
So, that, um, wraps up the content in that area, and now we want to switch over to have continual conversation. We started a conversation about equity at the very beginning, um, during our January, or, excuse me, February strategic planning session. So, now I'm going to ask our senior labor relations specialist, Brandon Davis, to join me again. Assistant to the city manager, Stacy Stout, was also a partner, as well as, um, there was an equity outcome champions team that was created, um, but I'm going to let Brandon, I'm going to turn it over to him, to take you through a dis, a continued discussion on equity.
Well, good morning, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, and Commissioners.
Welcome.
We will, uh, resume this equity discussion. It is my hope, uh, that you have been able to see the work that was done by the equity champions to embed equity throughout the entire strategic plan. I do want to highlight those equity champions again. That was Stacy Stout, Patty Cordell, Shar Ponsel, Hank Kelly, and Dan Adams. And our goal was to make sure that equity was seen in every single priority. Uh, we did take the feedback from the, uh, session that we had, uh, some months ago now, and that feedback was about creating a seventh pillar around equity, uh, and we began to do that work. And as we began to do that work, we looked at where equity was already in the plan, and we tried to just pull it out. So, let's pull out these areas to speak to equity. Let's pull out this, uh, priority that speaks to equity, this strategy that speaks to equity, this metric that speaks to equity. Uh, and it just kind of looked confused. Uh, it didn't give us a clear, a, a clear equity path, or a clear equity plan. And I think a part of that, or a part of our concern, was making sure that equity didn't become this standalone thing that the rest of the citizen, uh, the rest of the staff didn't feel responsible for. Uh, we wanted to make sure that equity wasn't just the job of the equity champions, or just the job of, of Diversity and Inclusion Department, but it was understood that equity was a responsibility, uh, and a value that was expected of every city staff member. So, in order to do that, in order to ensure that there was ownership of equity, uh, we are recommending leaving equity in, uh, each category. Now, we say that, that doesn't mean that we don't want to highlight equity. We definitely want to highlight equity, and we've, uh, we believe we've done it in a couple ways. The first thing is that, uh, we've made sure that equity was the very first thing strategically mentioned in our strategic plan. I, I will remind you that under governmental excellence, uh, the first thing we talk about is embedding equity throughout all city, uh, all city action. Uh, we talk about that very specifically, and making sure that we are desegregating data, uh, in order to make sure that's actually happening. Um, so, we're recommending against including a, a, a separate equity section, but we want to make sure that equity is truly embedded throughout everything. Uh, and when we kind of started talking about it, it, you know, originally, we talked about creating this seventh pillar, but there was another graphic, and if we could show that, that kind of talks about, uh, how we see it working, and what staff think works the best, and that's making sure that equity goes throughout everything, and that leads us to elevated quality of life for all of our citizens. Uh, and, and when we talk about, uh, separating equity, where our, our major concern is that individuals will, uh, look at it in, in ways that will have, they have historically looked at it. That's the job of the Diversity and Inclusion Office, to make sure there's equity. Uh, but it's not the job of the Diversity and Inclusion Office, it's the job of the city. In order for us to make sure of that, we need to make sure that the people are, who are eventually responsible for these priorities and for these strategies, understand that it's their responsibility to make sure that those things are done equitably. I would also remind you of the equity statement that we talked about in the last section, in the last session, uh, and, and I know you've all had an opportunity to talk about that, and we got some feedback on that, but as we talk about it, it's important, uh, that we embed equity into every section, because racial inequities have been baked into government in every section. So, in order to work against those racial inequities, we have to attack it the same way it's been embedded. Are there any questions about how we are proceeding regarding equity, or how we recommend proceeding regarding equity?
Well, so, a couple of other things that I want to, to highlight. In addition to the very deliberate section in, um, if you go to page two on the plan, that speaks to the embedded equity throughout governmental operations, and it talks about the very deliberate strategic infrastructure under those strategies. The first, the first objective of the plan is, is to do exactly what, um, what you've just heard, and reemphasize it through the other, other areas. So, um, I, I think, um, that, along with just taking, and another thing that I've been, in, in addition to that, being very deliberate about, and I think it's referenced in the plan, but on the, um, equity toolkit, is, uh, making sure each department has, uh, not, not only have we have organizational strategy, but each department has a departmental strategy on how they will further, uh, equity in their work. And so, for instance, I've highlighted some this morning, for human resources, their evidence-based hiring. That's already in the plan, but that's, that's an accountability I'm wanting to be having outside of the plan with that department. Or the city attorney's office, their commitment to, uh, their internship program, which is already in the plan, but that, I will be specifically working with them on that. Or the customer service division, their commitment to a digital inclusion survey in the plan, but I'll be pulling out, working with each department, and so, so forth and so on. So, there'll be a equitable component in the plan, there will be departmental accountability for reporting it, and then what you'll see, as we propose the budget, uh, this year, we will look at the entire budget through the lens of equity, looking at highlighting both operational things, as well as capital improvement- improvements through the equity lens. And so the plan will not, the plan will not be the only place where you will find the value of equity embedded through city operations, but it will be the guide for it.
City Manager, and then where will the draft equity statement go in the plan?
So right now, it's currently, we have a template where we've updated it. So before we even get in, so it'd be values, vision, and mission. And then after that would be the racial equity statement. And then after that, we would go into the six strategic priority areas, starting with governmental excellence. So you would go directly from the racial equity statement into the first objective being focused on equity within government operations.
I see. So this table of contents is going to be updated, and it'll be after the, it'll be basically fourth on the list?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Right, yeah, go ahead, Commissioner, and then I'll turn to Commissioner Jones.
Brandon, thank you so much for kind of sharing the work that you all had done after, I think, the last couple sessions we had, where I know I personally shared a lot about disparities that we have in our city and making sure that we call those out. And I agree that, you know, having, I don't necessarily agree that having equity as its own pillar would result in people thinking that it's the diversity department's responsibility, because I didn't think that these were tied to departments. I just thought that the pillars were specific things that said that this was important to the city as a whole. But I appreciate the work that has gone into trying to check into it, because I also think that it's important for every department to be aware of the value of equity. And so I think the statement was a really good addition. And I also think that making sure, City Manager, to your point, that the equity toolkit is mandated, that it's used in every department, because before it was optional. And my fear or concern is that if we do not call out equity in some way, or the disparities that exist, and I think even the matrix were added since some of those discussions, so all of this is saying, we're trying to make sure that it's highlighted in a lot, highlighted in a lot of ways. And I think, you know, because we've been talking about embedding equity for a few years, and we haven't seen any results. So for me, I was saying, why don't we do something other than what we've been doing, so we can get the results? And so I think if it isn't the pillar by itself, hopefully, these things will be embedded. And if they aren't, and if we're not seeing movement quickly enough, because I think we have been talking about it for a while and actually get called out on us talking about it and not having any results, hopefully we will revisit this as we're looking at the plan regularly, so that we can make sure that we pivot as quickly as possible, so we can have the results that we're all intending.
Definitely. When we look at the six pillars that are listed on this right now, we consider this equity still a pillar. But instead of it being a vertical pillar, it's a horizontal pillar, because it is a pillar we need to build on, but it's a pillar that flows through every other pillar. And Commissioner, I agree 100%. We need to call out these inequities, and it was our goal to make sure that was done. So one Equity Champion was put on every team to make sure that issues were looked at through the lens of equity, so that it would still caught out in the plan, just caught out in the individual sections.
That's great.
Thank you.
That's great, because I think that's the other concern, is that what I think has been a problem that we've had is we haven't had the right lenses looking at the right things. So that's why we keep having missteps, because the lens isn't there at every step of the way. So great to hear that. Thanks so much.
Yeah, and I think, and City Manager, and then Commissioner Jones, and I think too, Commissioner, what we have before us that I don't think we've had as clearly in the past are very specific metrics that are broken down demographically.
Yep, I agree.
Yep, so City Manager, and then Commissioner Jones?
And I just wanted to underscore, and to be, for us to be more deliberate about it, we have elevated the focus of equity to now make the Diversity and Inclusion Office part of the executive office. And so that was also a recent change, to combine it with some of the other work where there was already synergy, but not necessarily direct collaboration to be more intentional. And I think that will also help to elevate the focus.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, Mayor. Brendan, thank you for the update. And I think when I look at the draft statement, it's the last paragraph that very much sticks out for me, because it speaks specifically to making sure that each department has the knowledge, skills, and support to intentionally remove and prevent barriers. So I think that really speaks to the critical work of those who are going to be providing that information. And I think it's a lot to ask for a department or for an employee to carry out or operate with an equity lens if they don't know how to operate with an equity lens, if they don't have access to an equity lens. And so I really want to highlight the critical importance, because it is then when we can, I think, more authentically hold folks accountable. Because there's no excuses that they have the knowledge, they have the skills, and they have the support. But without those three things, I think it's really difficult to say that we had these expectations, and you didn't respond accordingly. Well, they weren't properly equipped. And so I think that there's, I want to make sure that we highlight that and make sure that folks have access to those three things, so.
One of the things the manager has done has been to instruct us, or tell us to make sure that we create a plan that allows for all city staff members to be trained in equity. And that's something that we're working on. And it's also reflected in the plan as a metric, I believe, under Objective Three. I'll find out exactly what objective that was under governmental excellence. But that is something that we're working towards, so that we can have that accountability.
Good.
I think the percentage of city employees that have gone through our cohort training, the plan is less than 10%.
That's correct.
And so we need to have something that's more intentional, to get 100% of all of our executives, managers, supervisors, lead people through the first year. And that needs to be, it can't be a three-month cohort. It needs to be a pretty exhaustive, comprehensive, but a day-long training where everybody gets exposure, and then get the entire organization through in a matter of a year, year and a half or so. And so, and that becomes the baseline. And then we build on that with other tools, experiences, and training. And so I think that's what we're going to try to do.
And that is Objective Three, and it's metric number six under governmental excellence.
So in follow-up then to that, City Manager, so I think all of us are really familiar with the Real Cohort and National Equity Project. Is the hope then to have more city employees go through that, or a subset of that? Because the challenge, and I know, we all know this, the challenge is making sure that we have a training that is evidence-based, clearly is powerful, and people walk away truly feeling equipped?
Right. So I am talking about something in addition to that, Mayor, where it is a very thorough exposure. It's an exposure. Certainly, in a full day, you can't have a, you know, you won't, it won't be a, everything you need to know about diversity, equity, inclusion, but you need to have some exposure. And right now, we have some employees who've not even been exposed to a common language, a common culture that we're having. You have different exposures. You have one department experiencing it another way, and you have this small group of cohorts going through one way, and you have another group of employees who've not even had the conversation. So what we're talking about is a common experience that doesn't take us six months or so, whatever the core time is to get to. And so I think there are other ways to do it. Now, we have employees that are working on long shifts, and we'll have to work through that and plan with our operational staff. But I think that will make us better as an organization, but it has to start from the top. And that would include also involving our elected officials as well. And so the first group, well, I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself, but we have to get it designed first. And design procured, and we talked deliberately about, at what point do we have the facilitator from the outside come in and doing it? And then at some point, we build the expertise internally, then to train along the side of them. And at the last phase, we are leading their supporting, and then finally, it's ours. So that's what we're working on.
Liminally, we've been discussing introduction to equity that could be a part of our onboarding process. So even in the orientation process, there's a mention of equity, introduction to what those type, what equity is, and how it's embedded throughout the city. And then, as the City Manager just talked about, maybe a more extensive day-long process that all staff members would also go to, go through, to give them a deeper understanding. And I know it is the desire of the department to still offer more in-depth classes or trainings regarding that. Obviously, not every staff member will be able to do that, because that's a more time, it takes more time to do that. But we're definitely working to do this introduction and to get that on-boarded as soon as possible.
Great, great. Thank you. Commissioner?
And I'm just glad, City Manager, that you also mentioned electeds, because I think that if, you know, we're going to be sitting in these seats, we certainly have to understand the, have that thorough exposure and understand the language. And it wouldn't be fair to expect our employees to do that if we weren't doing it ourselves. And I don't know if there is even an opportunity, and I understand capacity issues, but for those who get appointed to some of our boards, to have some sort of introduction as well, because they do make decisions that then inform us.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
That's a good point. Any other questions or comments?
Good work.
So with that, it sounds that we're getting some feedback, and Commissioner Linier, I really appreciate your feedback as well, that we'll move forward with our six strategic priorities, but elevating equity in the way that we have, that's been discussed with the, leading with an introduction around the statement, and then really launching into the planned components first and foremost through equity. So with that, we've received some great feedback from you from our last session and from today with a few follow-up items. And so my takeaway is, unless you have any additional feedback or request, is that we will work to revise this in the areas as necessary, and be working with the City Manager on kind of that revision. And then, I understand, the hope is to come back to ask for a resolution for approval of the strategic plan. And right now, I think we'd be looking, hopefully, at April 9. I know that City Manager would really like to have our plan completed before you head into your robust conversations around the budget. So that currently is our working plan that we'll be moving toward, and just wanted to ask if you had any questions, comments, or any additional feedback with that approach.
This has been a really good process. Thank you so much for spending so much time, taking us through this process, and helping us to see all of the great work that so many of you, all of you in the room, have contributed to. Thank you for the hole-punch papers. Thank you for listening. Like, all of those details I love, because I'm a detail kind of girl. So I appreciate, you know, all of the homework, and every time we've said something, you come back and kind of respond to that. And I appreciate all of that. Thank you. I'm looking forward to the execution of this plan.
Commissioner?
I want to echo those comments. This has been an amazing process. Thank you, City Manager and staff. You really did a great job of listening to us and offering all kinds of solutions as we brought up issues that we were concerned about. So thank everyone in this room and those who aren't here today for all of the hard work that you did, and how quickly it was done.
So I have two questions, and you may not have answers for them yet, or maybe City Manager needs to think about them a little bit more. So I too really appreciate all the work that went into this. I feel that this is a much more clear and concise plan that's a blueprint for this body, but also the organization. So my question is related to our past plans, with the Transformation Plan and the Sustainability Plan. A lot of what's included in this, I think, captures some of the things that were integrated into both of those plans. My worry is, having three plans out there is very confusing to the community. I think it's confusing to us, quite frankly. And so I'm wondering what will happen with those, if they'll be maybe archived, or maybe made more internal. But this will be the outward-facing plan to the community. I'm just curious, what does that look like? And then, secondly, when this, after this is approved, do we have a plan to get it on our website, but make it very user-friendly, where people will be able to drill down in areas they want to, but also have it tied to some type of dashboard and metric, once we have the metrics kind of flushed out and in place, and some infrastructure to capture that? And, you know, I remember in my previous job, I had a pretty in-depth PQI process, and the data we collected would automatically go into into the, you know, appropriate places, so every quarter I could look at progress or potentially not progress. So those are my two questions, City Manager.
Good questions, Mayor. So this will become the plan. So it will, this will be not only the outward-facing plan, but the inward-facing plan. This will be the plan in which we use to govern our operational decision-making. Now, departments may have further departmental strategy and operational strategy, but in terms of enterprise plan, this is what we will be using. So I have no intent to ask people to try to navigate between three different strategies. So this is it. And so I think we'll allow the Transformation Plan, Sustainability Plan, to inform us as history, to how we've gotten to this point. But this builds upon those, and it becomes our governing plan moving forward. Until we have a revised, or updated master plan, comprehensive plan, and then we'll have to go back and reevaluate our strategy in accomplishing that. Second, in terms of reporting, I think one of our earlier sessions talked about our accountability. This gets back to your point to accountability as well as engagement and connecting to community. We will try to be very deliberate and have an annual report. My hope is, you know, almost kind of like State of the City, that you would have a report on the outcome of the plan and other accomplishments annually. I need to give more thoughts to when the timing of that might occur. But there will be periodic updates. And I think we've talked about maybe quarterly, that we might be public in some of our updating. I'm looking to staff to make sure I'm not overcommitting to that. But departments definitely will be having a monthly, and some of the metrics require even more frequent monitoring than that. But in terms of the individual accountability, I expect, and what you don't have here is the determination of what department is leading, what executive is leading, manager, et cetera. But those performance plans should be occurring conversations at least two or three times a year. One, creating an expectation. Second, sometime mid-year check-in. And third, annually, doing a performance evaluation.
Great.
I think I would just add a few items to that in terms of, we have been starting to think about, with some of my colleagues that are here, implementation of the plan and understanding that the creation of the plan is really just that first step, and that true implementation of a plan, really speaking to that value of accountability that the City Manager discussed, is how we will hold ourselves accountable. So as we finalize this, and hopefully on April 9, we'll spend just a very short period of time highlighting a few of those items around implementation that we discussed, but internally ensuring that we have maybe probably even monthly updates on the plan, that we can roll up. And then I've also had conversations with Becky Joe and her team, and with our website, and thinking about brainstorming ideas, but a dashboard that's condensed of maybe what are the 10 to 12 that we really highlight for this year for the public, that you can go in and have real-time kind of updates, and then be able to click in it drive to our Open Data's website with some more formal reporting, is kind of, I know, some things that we've had early brainstorming ideas, and that we'll be vetting over the next few months after the plan is finalized for that implementation part.
Thank you.
If I could, unless there's anything else the team has to share, just speak to a couple comments regarding... a couple of comments regarding prioritization. First of all, before I do that, let me again reemphasize my appreciation to this team, those that are here and those who could not be here today, for my debt of gratitude for the work that you have done to make this a reality. I know it was a push. I know it was a challenge. And we were well aware when we took on this work that we were going to try to be building the plan as well as a budget at the same time, a document that you've not seen, that the same group of people have been working very hard on. But it was helpful for me to have this guiding work because as I viewed all the budget submittals and in my preparation with the, with the budget team and with the CFO, the plan was used, the draft plan even as a guiding document, and it made decisions very, I won't say easy, they were all tough decisions, but it was certainly helpful. So I want the staff to know how much I really, really appreciate their work, value their expertise, and am very proud of the work product that has been produced so far. I think it stands as a example, a standard to other communities. And I think the work that we've done will be innovative. Even the comment that I just heard from Commissioner Kelly about taking not only the expectation of having our introduction to equity to our employees, our elected officials, as well as board and commissioner, citizens who serve on boards and commissions. I don't think there are very many few, there are many communities in the country that are doing that. So I think that, that we will be setting the standard if we were able to accomplish it, or when I should say, we're able to accomplish that. So the plan is important, and there's a lot of things, and it's all important, and we won't be able to do it all right away or all the first year. I think, I want to thank Plant Moran for their partnership. And I think one of the meetings, they are, they're the ones who suggested, it's, it's not that we're saying no to some things, it's, it's just not now. And so I wanted to highlight a few things that, from this plan, that I am elevating to priority that may require additional investments as part of our fiscal plan. And there are other things that are going to be, that are prioritized, are already embedded in the budget, and you'll see those as we roll it out. But I just wanted to give some indication of some priorities that may require additional investment. If you don't hear it, that doesn't mean it's not a priority because it may be already be assumed operationally. So, so for instance, on, if I could just go through real quickly, how much time, I want to be mindful of time. So on governmental excellence, the strategy to create infrastructure, to elevate and organize the equity work in the department, that requires us to be very deliberate around people as well as resources. We've talked about training for our workforce, and we're going to need to fund that. And right now, there's no, no funding for that. The, the culture around performance management and innovation and collaboration accountability to make sure it's not just sitting on a shelf. I need eyes on plans and as well as the outcome and the performance. And we're going to be doing that through our performance, sustainable performance management office. Our, right now, it's an office of one person and a intern. Is that accurate? And so we're going to have to be more deliberate, deliberate about shifting resources to, to that area. And even with the master planning update and scoping, I think is what we had talked about earlier, there's, there's, there was $50,000 that was allocated to that in this past year's budget. And $50,000 is barely enough to do area-specific planning. So we're going to have to reevaluate how we resource, at least the scoping. It won't be the full cost of doing a master plan, but it will require more resources. Under economic prosperity and affordability, I want, there's a strategy around having small business ambassadorship or creating a small business development ambassador. I think we have one in the development office, but that is a temporary position, as I understand. And so we need to be more deliberate about that if we want to sustain it. I think the experiences have been good there. But I also would like us to be more proactive in our small business development and support and recruiting. And as businesses are prospering throughout this state and other communities, Detroit and Flint and other parts of the state and the region, and looking for places to expand, we're not talking about just corporate relocation. I know the right place does a lot of good work in helping land big corporate relocations. But whether businesses looking for retail expansions, we want to be more proactive in making it real easy to do business here in Grand Rapids. And so not just in the permitting process, but also the, the business recruitment process. There's another strategy under economic prosperity and affordability about increasing our exposure to our M L B E program. I think right now, there's only 23 or so certified participants in the M L B E program, and we need to be more deliberate around that. And that takes more deliberate focus. The river restoration project, I'll, I'll speak more about that in the budget, in the housing focus, I'm sorry, just on the economic prosperity and affordability. With all of the changing dynamics around the dissolution of the land bank and the need for us, I believe we'll have more conversation for us to be more involved, engaged in leading our community fund, our housing community fund. I did meet with the advisory committee this past week. They are waiting for someone to take leadership. Because we've, right now, the issue is not just about low-income housing, which the Housing Commission does a great job, but it's about affordable housing and housing in general. And we, at one point, this city did have, as I understood, a deputy housing officer. I may not have the title correctly. But we had a person that was specifically designated as our expert for, for housing. And I think if we're, we have a lot of expectations around housing supply and affordability, we probably can be a little bit more deliberate around our leadership around that. Regarding safe community, looking at those evidence-based strategies that could prevent some of the root causes for, for violence and emergency responses. And I know that there's, we've, we're, what I am looking forward to is the culmination, as we move forwards, the budget process of the result of a couple of studies. One would be the cure violence process, the other would be the deployment study. And I think they're, they're both close to completion and will help to inform the budget recommendation as well as to make sure that we have those evidence-based strategies, that we are staffed appropriately to ensure, ensure a consistent response to the safety of our community, and that we are with the other incidences that we've had recently with our weather-related issues. I want to make sure that we have the ability to effectively communicate, manage, and respond to not only weather incidents, but emergencies as well. Fire Department did a great job, our chief did a great job in wearing a couple of hats. He was not only our chief, but he was also our emergency manager. But I'm not sure if there's a, another incident where it is, it requires critical fire, primary response, that the chief would have the ability to, to wear both hats. And we, we need to be more focused on our emergency management capability. Then the other area under mobility, improving the ridership experience in our fare-free transit network, looking at the dash and Route 19. I think those are things we're going to try to prioritize and doing things to improve walkability around the community, to, both in normal weather as well as inclement weather. And look at our sidewalk plowing program. I think it's something we want to look at as well as looking at our need for parking in not only downtown area, but throughout the community. And completing the economic mobility and development plan. Under health and environment, any, we're going to continue to look at reducing carbon footprint, trying to, try to expand our park and activate open spaces, particularly where there are neighborhoods where have parked efficient resources. Looking at how we can improve the regional trail system and of course focusing on anything that helps us to have a PFOS reduction in our water quality. And collaborating with other partners to reduce lead-based paint exposures. And then finally, under engage and connected community, enhancing our efforts to communicate with all residents, both in person as well as digitally. And also just being more deliberate about an engagement strategy, better coordinating our engagement effort. So we're not over-engagement and, over-engaging, but we're being very deliberate and coordinating better with, with our residents. So I, what I will do, these are just preliminary thoughts of what I think will be the priorities. We're going to refine those, and I will share those with commissioners to, but the reason I'm, I'm doing that, we are, again, we're going through both processes at the same time, strategic planning and the budget. And there are a lot more strategies than what I've outlined. But as we build our budget, I've made sure I've paid attention to the ones that I've just shared with you. So I just wanted to share that feedback.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any final questions or thoughts related to the priorities that the City Manager shared? I know that he and the entire team is working diligently on the budget. So we'll have, I'm assuming, the, the plan for the budget review process and public hearing date and final approval soon.
Yes. I want to ask Mayor if our CFO, Jeff Doe, could come and remind us of what that schedule looks like. If he, you know, probably putting me on the spot, but I bet he has it embedded in his memory.
I know it's going to be a little different this year than years past, which I think all of us are really open to, a new process.
Oh, perfect. Allison has the calendar. So, good morning. April 23rd is still the scheduled release date of the budget. We're hoping to have most of the decisions done by today or next Friday so our, my staff has time to put the whole thing together. And then we're going to have a, a couple of intense weeks because the public hearing is then scheduled for May 14th with adoption on May 21st. So a very abbreviated review schedule.
What?
This is getting us closer to the charter requirements.
So let's go back and talk about that. That's, that's our goal. So, and, and tell, again, explain why it is such a compressed time.
So the charter actually calls for adoption, and I'm going from memory here, but I believe by the second Monday in May. So that would have been May 13th. So we did work with the comptroller to say, can we get a little bit of an extension on that? Because that really wasn't possible given the release of the fiscal plan. So we did get it backed up to, again, public hearing the 14th, adoption the 21st. And that gives them time on the backend to get it all input into the system and gives her staff time to, you know, double-check all the figures and things like that. So that's why we upped the schedule this year.
Now, that's what, what our goal is. But the reality is, Commissioner, it will take whatever time it takes.
Yeah.
So, City Manager, do you think you're going to have a budget that's presented that we'll just say, yeah, this is, this is good. Yeah, great. Amazing. Fantastic.
I, I, I think my job is to present the budget. Then after I present it, it's yours for review and adoption. So whatever time this commission needs to, to do that is the time it's going to take.
So I, I'm looking at my schedule. I don't think we have any time held on our schedules on April 23rd or the 30th or May 7th for this body to meet intensively, as you just said, Jeff. So we may, we may need to get some holds on our schedule for budget sessions, which I'm looking at my schedule. I already have things scheduled on those off Tuesdays. So we, we probably need to get on that pretty quickly. And then my, my other question, and I know I was just briefly updated and briefed about this charter requirement that I don't think has been adhered to for decades. But with, with that conversation, I wonder if there's an opportunity maybe for us to take a look at that to align with our typical July 1 budget date. You know, I'll kind of defer to you, Jeff.
Yeah, we, we've done some research. There's nothing really in the state statutes that tell us when we need to adopt the budget. So it really does fall back on the city's rules and regulations and charter. So the state doesn't require, have any requirements related to that. We do have backup dates in June, so two meetings in a row again, just in case it doesn't get done this year because this is a drastic switch. So, and those are, I just had it up here, June.
It looks like our comptroller wants to say something else as well, but.
Our new system requires more time to process the entry of the budget. And if we delay the process, it delays the whole system. It delays the procurement process, and it delays the accounts payable process. An approval in June puts a lot of stress on the system and the employees that have to do the processing.
Got you. So Madam Comptroller, are you talking about our new financial system?
Yes.
Okay. And that was, remind me when that was implemented? That change, was it a year ago or two years ago?
It's been two years.
Okay.
My staff is smarter than the system.
Okay.
Systems do not replace people, and this new system is putting a lot of stress on the staff. So I need you to do your job and get this budget done in May and not push it into June. Thank you very much.
All right.
Watch your step.
All right. Appreciate that.
So, Mr. City Manager, just to, so, so, just to make sure I'm clear. So how, can you, I'm shocked right now. I'm sorry. Because I just think that's going to be a short amount of time to kind of digest so much information. So how will it come to us? You know, I can see where the elimination of departmental updates, that'll be an easy thing to kind of eliminate in order to, to carve out the time. But how will you, are you just going to do like, here are the overarching changes, and then have those items kind of be at the highlight of what you share so that we can?
Well, I was going to defer one question to the comptroller, but.
Oh, Madam Comptroller, if we have a follow-up, if you're willing.
But I wanted to make sure I understood. She said the, in, in May. So is that, because what we had proposed was mid-May. So if we have more time, that, that certainly would, would help. But as I understood it, you can have a seat. You can have a seat. As I understood it, we were trying, this was based, now, in all fairness, we did highlight these dates at the beginning of the strategic planning process. And, and we were trying to dovetail the, the culmination of both processes together. So, and we're still early. But if we have the entire month of May, that does add, add more, more time. And so what I heard her say, that we need to get adopted in May.
And the more time you take and delay the implementation of putting the budget into the system, the more stress you put on the staff that have to work with it.
And we certainly don't want to do that. But as I understood earlier, your comments where if we get it, if the commission gets it done in May, that would be helpful. Is that accurate?
That would be better than last year.
Okay. So, so that, that's good. So what we'll do is we will take that into consideration and come up with a different outline. Our intent was certainly not to go through every department. But I think the budget will look a little different where you can see every department's budget. I think that's how we're planning to lay out the framework, that you can more easily see it. We will highlight some of the major areas, have the overview, and then get feedback from you on which areas you would like to have more dialogue. I think our intent is to go through the capital improvement, budget, public safety, do some around infrastructure services as a, as a core, and see what other areas you might want to have more dialogue. Please.
And in the past, we've done a little bit on the 23rd, just kind of a general, here it is. And we'll talk about it. We intend on doing a lot larger overview on that.
More details on the 23rd instead of overview.
Correct.
Okay.
I think some of the feedback too from last year after we did the survey was a desire to spell out more clearly the areas where there was the most significant change.
Change. Yeah.
Because some things are very similar to years past, right?
Pretty normal and correct.
And they just kind of roll over and continue. And how do you really highlight and pull out, this is, this is where the real difference is from years past? And I don't know, format-wise, I know we've gone through a
And I don't know, format-wise, I know we've gone through a couple of different formats over the past several years, but I just wonder if that would be helpful to this body as well.
Oh, absolutely. I think then we can focus on the change as opposed to just hearing the status quo. Yeah, no offense.
That's good feedback. So we'll, we'll work on that. We'll, we'll, we'll try to give you a little bit more time to consider some of the, the recommendations before adoption.
Yeah, and Madam Comptroller, thank you for your counsel. I appreciate hearing that and, and even hearing the stressors that, you know, the delays have put on your staff. So thanks for sharing that perspective, because that's kind of new information for me.
And then for the schedule, can we maybe get the executive office to identify blocks of time?
Yeah, we'll work on that.
That can get on all of our schedules?
We'll work on that.
Okay, great. All right. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we still getting out early?
Oh, well, we have five minutes, but I believe one of our commissioners wants to make a statement.
Well, I just wanted to say, thank you, Sarah.
Commissioner Kelly?
Comptroller, I just wanted to say thank you for adding your insights and information. This is new to us and we appreciate that very much.
All right. So Commissioners, any final comments or things you want to say before we adjourn this meeting?
No, I do, I do. I think we have one more or two more, maybe.
Two more things. I'm sorry. I'll assume no one over here wants to make a comment, so I'll just refer to, I'll start with Commissioner Moody and then Commissioner Kelly. And then I'll see if the City Manager wants to make any closing statements and then we'll wrap up.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you for this opportunity. What I'd like to do is take this opportunity to address the staff in the City of Grand Rapids and the residents. I want to say on February the 27th, our commission chambers was filled with residents and community advocates who took the time to express their concerns about our police department handling the case involving Mr. Ramus Gomez, a former U.S. Marine detained by ICE. From conversations following that conversation of that meeting on that day, I was quoted. And I want to take this opportunity to address my statement from that day. I regret that I have not been able to be in town to address it until now. First, I want to express my deep appreciation for all the fellow community residents in the City of Grand Rapids who communicated to me on this matter. I received several phone calls and many emails, all of which I had the opportunity to have read. I believe everyone has the right to speak freely and protest and even advocate when they feel the need to do so. It has become apparent to me that, however, that my words may have been misunderstood. My reference to the people was not to generalize the entire City of Grand Rapids and its community, but rather to reference the individuals who voiced their views on the issue during February the 27th commission meeting. I also want to say that I trust the interim Police Chief Kittle, who will make the necessary decisions with our police department that hopefully and rightfully will be the right response to our community. I wanted to make that statement so that it does not get misconstrued because I believe that we have a great city, we have a great department. And yes, we do have to work on some things. But I wanted to make sure that we don't misunderstand because I don't want anyone to think that I'm not for the police department or any other.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly?
I only wanted to say that I so appreciate looking at this open data because there's such a strong link between our work and equity and really revealing the history, how we got here, whether it's transportation or housing or public safety or climate. And that though there are revelations, then we need to figure out where we were, benchmark and make some changes. So very much appreciate that, that effort because we know that it's going to guide us in the future.
Thanks. Final words, City Manager, and then we'll adjourn with a minute and a half to go.
Again, thank you to everyone for being here. Thank you for your, your engagement.
Thank you. All right, we're adjourned. Have a happy Friday.